And maybe it's ironic too at this time where like school libraries are you know such a point in the culture wars. Where you don't even have one. What should I say? Can I sit next to you?
I'm sure, I mean you can sit by the side.
In the general area.
Do you want to talk to at some point, whatever these shows you're going to? Are the shows you're going to all punk shows?
Yeah, mostly the shows I play or attend. Because I might make.
I know what you're talking about.
But um, yeah, I still attend mostly punk shows. But that's because I mostly attend shows I play.
Yeah, alright. But these are like basement shows?
Yeah, basement shows and all kinds of.
Love basement shows.
You want to go to some basement shows? This is funny, this is how old I am. Last weekend, two weeks ago, I don't know. My, a friend of mine's like a daughter.
So, you're gonna take it, you're gonna take it sort of ten days, you're gonna do the meeting?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Yeah, alright.
I'll do it. Alright, and that's this week, okay, I'll take it.
I should be sitting on the front. We all stand up. I sound as if I'm. I didn't know that this was your group all this time. I did not know, I didn't hear it. So, so they were trying to load up there. Down here, you know.
Sorry, um Philly Cam is here, they are streaming live. So people can hear, um people in the room, but we just wanted to let you all know that. It's not on yet, but it is streaming. It's streaming, just to let you know.
There you are. Thank you so much for being here, people from northwest Philadelphia. We really appreciate your presence and we really appreciate the people watching at home. Through G-Town Radio Frequency and Philly Cam. We are so pleased to be able to produce this event. On behalf of G-Town Radio and our colleagues and co-sponsors, including Center in the Park. Our applause for them please. WHYY. Germantown Info Hub. The Philadelphia Cultural Fund. Germantown United CDC. The Chestnut Hill Local. Every Voice, Every Vote. And of course Philly Cam. And to the many small businesses and other institutions in northwest Philadelphia who are also co-sponsors of the event. A big, big thanks to you. G-Town Radio is a nonprofit, nonpartisan institution, serving the northwest area of Philadelphia. We had really fun programming, very eclectic at times, but it's fun for everyone. This forum is part of our ongoing campaign to promote the democratic process and inform our community residents. My name is Pedro Rodriguez. I am the Chair of the Board of G-Town Radio and I reside in the Pennax Section of Philadelphia. At this point, I would like to indulge you with a small business matters that we have to take as Germantown Radio. Uh and that is a quick board meeting. Haven't seen a quorum present, according to our Secretary Julia Weeks. Uh this meeting is called to order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? It's in a second, it's a moving second, the agenda is approved. All business, including the approval of the minutes. Do I hear any questions about the minutes for the April meeting? No questions. Do I hear a motion to move the minutes? For approval, thank you, it's been moved and approved. The minutes of the April meeting of the G-Town Radio Board has been approved. Uh do I hear a motion to adjourn? Thank you so much, a motion to adjourn is not available. G-Town Radio, we're looking for volunteers and board members, as you can see we run quick meetings. So you should volunteer and serve in the board. Thank you. I am pleased to present to you, as part of our programming. A institution in northwest Philadelphia. I am honored to present to you, Enzadi Keta, poet.
Hello? My name is Enzadi Keta. I'm a Germantown homeowner. I was born at Germantown Hospital. Graduated from Germantown, how you get the idea? Uh this is a first, I've never been asked to read a poem of mine at a political event, but uh here we go. So I'd like to just give greetings to all the neighbors, to the councilwoman, to the candidate for council. And uh everyone involved in this uh in this effort. I'm gonna read a poem, it's a really old poem. But it sort of speaks to us in a certain way, grounds us here. Uh there's some changes in the Ger- Germantown demographics and the references. Some of you have been around long enough to catch some of them. But um the poem is called Witness. Can everybody hear me? Good? Okay. Witness. Juggling keys that lead to Germantown, I am walking. Home to black people whose histories paragraph the creeks and cobblestones. Who navigated southern sweat for wordless northern tombs. Home to white people who breathe in black faces without flinching. Change the color of air. Toss their goods on the counter and wait their turn. Home to Asian people who sew their worth with early rising stitches into this human quilt. Who raise their heads to jagged American syllables in greeting. I'm watching Germantown. Home to high school. Advertising its loud hopes in color, plastic and leather. Gems and gold spun fingertips, a river flooding its banks. Mother girls heavy and boy fathers leaping like tigers. And those quiet ones who slip between a river of secrets gleaming. Home to cane walkers with swollen ankles, padded cotton coats. Golf caps and Jeff caps and Kangols. Tote bags, pill boxes, rubber soles. Measuring the day from door to bus corner. Bodies creased by wear and winter. High blood and stern breath, proud of their memories and manners. Home to human life clouding the sidewalk outside the three-two center long gone. Where checks and food stamps cost a day of waiting. To dented black cabs ticking and twisting. To our community of beggars. Brown lady with bloated mouth. Horse blonde junkie with broken feet. Bald man with bent neck. Drunk man with torn pants. Home to Diane and Toms, where the word is platter. Where orders snap and weave. The waitress butters, the mirror sizzles and the tight smile stirs to the smell. Home to shop riot on Saturday night. Where coupons and cards in wrinkled ready hands extend. Where students in baseball caps stand, temporary in their ease. Where men in blue shirts with names sewn on their chest nod and hold the door. Where young cashiers flicker like perfect black candles. I am listening to Germantown. Gospel sprung from Vernon Park. Work as hammer drill, bus groan, tennis pop. Silence as certain corner sellers also watch what strives and lags beyond them. Listening again to nights that teach the difference between cricket and cicada. Between automatic and pistol. Mothers and crossing guards laughing in the cold. Children exploding youth inside plaid uniforms. Babies suited up in Aqua strollers. I am walking home. Thank you.
Thank you, Enzadi, for starting this meeting right. I will now turn over the meeting to our moderator. Sam Searls is a Report for America Corps member, covering gun violence and gun prevention for the HYY News. Thank you, Sam, it's all yours.
Hi everyone, welcome to the Candidates Forum. I'm gonna uh start by explaining some of the rules uh for this forum, which each of the candidates received beforehand. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement, four minutes for a closing statement, and three minutes to answer each question. Uh there will be a one-minute rebuttal after each question. Uh the opening and closing statements will go in this order. Seth Anderson Oberman will go first, and then Councilperson Cindy Bass, this is just based on last names. The timekeeper is sitting in the first row, where are they? In the middle, okay, close enough. Uh the timekeeper is in the middle there, um when there's half a minute left of your speaking time, the timekeeper will hold up a card that says thirty seconds. Indicating that you have thirty seconds to finish the answer, there we go. At fifteen seconds, the timekeeper will hold up a card that says fifteen seconds. Uh please wrap up when you see the stop card. If you continue speaking after the stop card is held up, I will say thank you and move on to the next speaker. Um and personal references for other candidates are out of order. Uh as a reminder, there are cameras around the room. The forum is being broadcast live and will be rebroadcast several times on various radio stations, online, YouTube, and other forums. Uh for our audience members, now's a really great time to turn off your phones, your watches, anything that's gonna beep, go off. Play your favorite song. I'll give you all a minute. Mine would be really embarrassing, it's Lizzo, so. For the rest of the uh the audience recommendations here, um just please treat all the candidates fairly. Um please remain quiet throughout the forum. Um we don't want clapping, cheering, or calling out during the forum. After a closing statements, applause uh for all the candidates is more than welcome. Um no campaign literature or signs are allowed inside the room, but you can wear buttons or other things that are on your person already. Neighborhood residents submitted these questions when they registered for this forum. And a panel of organizers for the event reviewed the questions for legibility, clarity, and applicability to the candidates. Uh we use as many, uh we'll use as many as time allows, uh we'll sometimes combine them if they're similar. And we're gonna try to cover as many topics as possible. Um once again, thank you candidates for agreeing to participate. Thank you to Center in the Park for hosting. And thank you to our audience both in person and online for listening to this critical civic dialogue. Uh we will start with Seth Anderson Oberman's opening statements and then Councilperson Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening. My name is Seth Anderson Oberman. I'm a black working-class union organizer, a public school parent, and a husband to my beautiful wife, Ayesha. I was born and raised in Germantown and live on the east side. My wife and I chose to raise our kids here because it's a proud working-class neighborhood that celebrates our racial and economic diversity. And where neighbors look out for each other. But seeing our neighborhoods change before my eyes has been painful. Because I know that change is not for us. I know that if we don't act now, our children won't be able to afford to live in the neighborhood where they grew up. We're seeing our neighbors being displaced. Rents skyrocket across the district while property taxes have ballooned to subsidize abatements to wealthy developers. Seniors on fixed incomes are being left behind. Every inch of land is being sold and filled with unaffordable buildings and condos. Meanwhile, Germantown High School and Ada Lewis have been closed. Our libraries and rec centers have been defunded and left to rot. A toxic gas plant was installed in one of the poorest parts of this city. And when our communities organized to oppose these things, our city councilperson didn't fight for us. Over the next two hours and six days, my opponent will try every which way to make me seem like I'm an outsider. She will say I'm not from here, I am. She will say I haven't done anything, I have. I've been a union organizer, taking on greedy bosses for better pay, healthcare, dignity, and respect. Beware the tactics of the boss. As working people, divide and conquer is what keeps us powerless. Keep your eyes on the prize, my friends. This is nothing but misdirection to distract from our council members' record of neglect and cronyism. Closed schools, accelerating gentrification and displacement, abandoned rec centers, more violence in our communities. A campaign funded by developers. I'm running because we deserve better. We deserve representation that shows up and listens, not just two months before an election, but all year round. We deserve leadership that will bring us together to fight for what we need. Good jobs with family sustaining wages. Deeply affordable housing, fully funded and safe schools, libraries, and rec centers. Clean neighborhoods with green spaces, thriving business corridors, and an expanded mental health infrastructure. To address crisis of vi- the crisis of violence from a prevention lens. If you believe we create stronger, safer communities by investing in people, then stand with me when we show Philadelphia what community power looks like on May sixteenth.
Alright, thank you so much, uh Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here, and I want to thank you all for coming out tonight despite the fact that the Sixers are playing, so. Thank you for being here. Um, you know, I, I just want to tell you a little bit about myself. And I also want to address some of the things that my opponent just said. So what you should know about me is that I'm a lifelong Philadelphian. Born and raised in North Philadelphia. I've lived in the northwest for the last thirty-plus years now. And I was raised in a single-parent household with my mother and my sister. I went to public schools. I went to Temple University. I'm someone who has been in our communities, active, engaged, all along the way. Because being from North Philadelphia, I knew that if I wanted my community to be better. Then it was gonna take the work of the people who lived in that community and other communities to make it happen. No one was gonna be our savior, no one was gonna come along and make things better for us. And so I started as a teenager volunteering, being involved in the neighborhood, being a part of what was happening in the community. I didn't wait until I was running for office. I didn't wait until somebody came along and recruited me or asked me to run for an office. I was engaged and involved from the very beginning in North Philadelphia and then brought that activism here to northwest Philadelphia. And so, some of you may know me from my work in northwest Philadelphia before I was elected to anything. Before I was elected to city council, before I was on Democratic State Committee, before I was an elected committee person. I was active as a president of East Mount Airy Neighbors, my civic association. I was active as a part of the Pleasant Playground Advisory Council. I was active as a part of the Youth Services Committee, helping young people from our communities get summer jobs right here in the community. I've been active on the youth, uh or the uh eighth district, or excuse me, the Mount Airy Schools Committee. Which is a committee around schools in the Mount Airy neighborhood in which I reside. And so I've been active long before I held any public office or was, had any title attached to my name. But I want to address a couple of things, and I, you know, last time at the last debate, one of the things that I said is Seth, where you been? Because some of the things that my opponent just said simply are not true or he is misinformed. And I know I only have fifteen seconds left, I saw the sign, so I'd be happy to go into them throughout the course of this debate. But one thing in particular was the conversation about the gas power plant, in which I wrote the letter against it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'll come back to that, I'll come back.
Alright, so, gotta make sure I get my questions in order here. Alright, so we're gonna move on to uh the forum's first question and answer portion. Each candidate will have three minutes to answer each question. They'll have, oh, I told y'all to turn them off. Second reminder. You can't hear me? That's terrifying, that's never happened before in my life, ever. Alright, I'm gonna sit forward, I got you. It's the first time I've ever had to do this. My mom's gonna freak out. Alright. Back to business. Uh we now move on to our forum's uh first question and answer portion. Each candidate will have three minutes to answer each question. They'll have a rebuttal for, of one minute for each question if they choose. Uh we'll start with Councilperson Cindy Bass. First question, uh what do you plan to accomplish in your first thirty days, and you can expand that to the first ninety days as well?
Certainly, well I've, you know, as you know, I've been in office now, um this is my third term. And one of the things that uh we've been working on are blight, crime, uh and our Parks and Recreation System as the Chair of Parks and Recreation uh for City Council. I, I think the most pressing issue is crime. Um you know, nine out of ten Philadelphians don't feel safe in the city right now. That's a problem, that affects everything, it affects quality of life. It affects the economy in Philadelphia. And if folks don't feel comfortable leaving their front door to go out and to shop or to socialize or to be a part of the fabric of the, of their community. It's a real problem for all of us. And so, one of the things that we've been working on is a program called What Do You Do When A Shooter Lives With You? Which is really aimed at making sure that parents are engaged around their young people, what's happening with their young people, what's happening in their lives. And do they have access to a firearm? Now, a couple of things, I went to a, a funeral a few weeks ago for a fifteen-year-old that was shot and killed on his way to school outside of Simon Grant's. And there's a good chance that the people, the young men who shot him, were probably in the same age range. And there's a very good chance that they don't have apartments, they don't have their own places to live, they live at home with mom and dad. And that that gun that was used to kill that fifteen-year-old was in somebody's house. Some parent, some caregiver, some grandparent, some foster parent, that gun was in someone's house the night before. We've got to be much more engaged and intentional in terms of what is happening with our young people and getting into uh their rooms. Going through their rooms, finding out what they have in the rooms, do they have a firearm and who are they associating with, and that's one of the things. But uh beyond what we're doing uh with parents and caregivers, I think that right now the city of Philadelphia, we need more police. The Police Department of Philadelphia is at an all-time shortage. We do need more police, we need more homicide detectives to be able to address the homicides that are happening at a record rate in Philadelphia. We're at a shortage in homicide detectives, we're at a shortage in uh police overall. And out of all of the candidates who are running. Whether it's for city council, whether it's for mayor, there's only one candidate who believes that we need less police than we have right now. And who thinks it's okay to defund the police, which I do not subscribe to. I think that we do need our police, we need good working relationships with our police department. But there's only one candidate who thinks that we don't need police and thinks that it's okay to defund police, and that's Seth. So, thank you.
Okay, uh same question.
Uh thank you, let me just correct something that was said. Um I have not talked about defunding the police at all. Um I think the police are part of the solution to addressing crime. And I also think that we need deep investment in our communities to a, to a, to address crime. Um and violence, because the violence that we're seeing is systemic and it's generations-deep. And it comes from disinvestment, it comes from mass incarceration, it comes from redlining and, and underemployment and. underemployment and unemployment in our communities, and the ways in which people in our communities have been hurt for decades and decades and decades. So I think that that's the way to address crime. I have never said that we should defund the police. I would say that the first thing that I would do is that I would pass a zoning overlay that requires that new construction include deeply affordable housing. There is a housing crisis in Philadelphia, and all of this ties into the violence and the crime. Because when you don't have a stable place to live, it's very hard to do anything else in your life. I know this personally, as a kid, we moved around a lot, and I did not have a stable place to live, and I know the kind of stress that that put on our family. So I think housing is a fundamental key issue. The zoning overlay that they passed in West Philly requires all-new construction to include 20% affordable at 40% AMI. I think we need a housing analysis to make those numbers specific to this district, but this is the kind of investment that we need in people in this district. And that would be my first action as a city councilperson.
Can I respond? Yes. So one-minute rebuttal.
Okay. So just a couple of things. The first is that, one of the things that Seth, that you mentioned was, you know, the long-term investments that need to happen to address crime. But if you're afraid to come out of your house right now, what are we going to do right now? And what we need to do right now is get additional police officers. We also need cameras. My opponent has said that he is not in favor of additional cameras to make sure that we can use them as tools to address crime, as tools to pay attention to see what's happening so that the police can use these tools and technology to be able to help our communities. Again, you know, the difference between us is quite stark. He doesn't feel that we need cameras in our neighborhoods. He doesn't think that this is something that's going to help the police, despite the fact that we in our office have put up, helped put up cameras and have helped the police solve at least two homicides that I'm aware of with cameras.
One minute.
Thank you. At a recent police captain's meeting of the 39th District, I asked a police officer there who works in the front lines, you know, what she thought would help with crime, violent crime specifically in the district. And she said, "Fund our schools." That's what she said.
Trying to keep it down, keep it down.
So I just want to say, you know, this is a difference. This is a difference. This is, you know, on the one hand, we have a campaign that, you know, I understand that people are afraid, but we have a campaign that's pumping that fear? For what end, I ask you? And on the other end, we have a campaign that's talking about bringing people together, that's talking about investing in our communities in people to make a difference. And I think, you know, we're all isolated in our homes, and people are afraid to come out. And I think having public spaces and investing in like our parks, honestly, as a public space to meet, to talk with your neighbors in beautiful, green, and lit spaces where we can get to see each other as people.
All right, thank you. Our next question. What programs, including job training, would you specifically organize for young people in Germantown?
Well, one of the things that we've done is we actually started, and we have the only one in the city of Philadelphia, we started a job training program in the Free Library of Philadelphia. So we're able to get our young people inside the library and get them training, get them job skills such as resume writing, interviewing skills, things of that nature. We've also been able to place a significant number of them in very well-paying jobs, I would say between $18, actually starting at $18. I don't think anyone has been placed at less than $18 per hour. These are the kind of things that I think that we need to have throughout our entire library system so that we offer these services as another option to be able to get young people into the library system so that they can be a part of the fabric of the community, feel comfortable within the library, get job training skills. And we were able to do this in partnership with a great organization called NYN, which does this all across the city of Philadelphia. So this has been a very successful program. This was something that came out of the Eighth Council District Office. We're the only one in the city of Philadelphia to offer such a program, and we're very, very proud of it. And next term, we intend to expand that program so that we can have it at, let's say, Joe Coleman Library, right around the corner, also some of the other libraries throughout the district, such as Lovett Library also in Chestnut Hill. But we want to spread it to as many places as we can so that people have these resources available. We see the library system as a way to help people get engaged and to find jobs, and we can do this in combination, working together. So, thank you.
Same question?
Thank you. Could you reread the question, please?
Absolutely. What programs, including job training, would you specifically organize for youth in Germantown?
Thank you. This is part of a larger question around, you know, what can be an economic driver in the city of Philadelphia? I think we need to get Philadelphia off of fossil fuels. We need to green our economy. We need to invest in modern green technology. There is a ton of money that's available for the city of Philadelphia that's going to be coming in from the Inflation Reduction Act. You know, that's going to be coming in to help us transition into this green economy where we're retrofitting, you know, our public buildings, our mass transit infrastructure, helping people take this money that's available through the Inflation Reduction Act to invest in their homes, to make their homes more energy-efficient so that they are decarbonizing, right? At the same time, people are reducing their utility bills. This is going to be a win-win, and we need people who are going to know how to produce this new technology, repair it, install it. These are great jobs. I would like to see our high schools have pathways into these jobs, starting in communities that have been the hardest hit by environmental racism and by disinvestment. You know, a pathway into these jobs, these can be good union jobs, family-sustaining jobs in our community, getting us off of fossil fuels and greening our economy and giving our future generations a chance to live in concert with our planet.
All right, one minute. One minute. Oh, rebuttal. Rebuttal? All right. Going to move on then. Starting here with Councilwoman Bass, what do you think, what do you think are the root causes of gun violence, and how would you work to address those causes and increase solutions?
Well, there's a few things here. Some of the root causes of gun violence include the lack of investment that's been made into our school system. There can be no doubt about that. Obviously, you know, not being able to support the school district of Philadelphia for a very long time. You know, we haven't had the money that we need out of Harrisburg. It's really not a secret. And so if you put less and less and less in, you know, from kindergarten through grade 12, you're really not fairly equipping our young people to be able to go out and be self-supportive, to support their community, to have the jobs and the opportunities that some other communities just across the border, whether you're in Sheltonham Township or in Lower Marion. You know, what we spend per child pales in comparison to what is spent across the county line. And so I think that the first thing that we have to do is really fight Harrisburg, continue to fight Harrisburg, and to get the resources that we need. We need a fair funding formula. If we're really going to do something about crime and violence and young people, we've got to make sure that we're properly educating them and providing the level of resources that they need to be able to go out and support themselves, as I mentioned before, support themselves, support their families, and be a productive member of the community. So that's one of the things, many things, that need to happen to be able to assist with our young people and getting them out of the criminal justice system. The other thing is, you know, one of the things that we did in my office is we started a Defender Day along with an expungement clinic. Now, when we came into city council, no one was doing expungement clinics. We started working with Community Legal Services and other entities to make sure that we were able to help people actually clean up their records so that they could go out and get good-paying jobs, and they could get their situation in order. And, you know, they could be able to get into public housing and other things that they're excluded from because they have a criminal background. We started with expungement clinics, and then we expanded it to Defender Days, where we bring in now the Public Defender's Office so that they can sit down, meet with folks, and talk about what upcoming cases and what things may still be open and relevant that we can address so that we can get them, again, with a clean record or as clean as possible to be able to get them productive and back into society.
All right, moving on. Same question.
I think the councilmember and I largely agree on this. You know, we need deep investment in our communities. You know, what we're seeing, what we've seen, I don't know if folks remember, I mean, I know there's folks, you know, there's people in the room who do. You know, there was a time when we had an industrial economy in Philadelphia where, you know, a good union job could be a family-supporting job, and these were jobs that sustained neighborhoods, right? We had Tasty Cake on Hunting Park. We had the Bud Plant. You know, there, you know, we had Botany 500 down. I mean, there was, these were thriving industrial jobs. Philadelphia's lost 450,000 jobs, you know, since the, you know, mid-to-late 50s. And really, there's not been much that's come in to replace those, eds. and meds. But, you know, building, we need an economic driver that's going to get people back on track, good, union-paying jobs that are family-sustaining. This is the green economy that we need to build. So that's one thing. We need deep investment in our public assets and resources. So, again, our schools, our libraries, our rec centers. We've defunded so much of programming and, you know, things for our children to do. I grew up going to PAL. I grew up going to the, you know, going to the rec center. There was always something to do. There were, you know, movie nights. There was, all of this stuff has been cut, and so there's nothing for our kids to do, you know, especially together. And so we need to build that infrastructure that shows our children that we love them, that we value them, that we help them find things to do, meaningful things, whether that's sports, whether that's art, whatever they're into, we should be asking them as well, and find the funding and programming for that. You know, that said, there are also people who are doing incredible work in our communities, meeting with families and their high, you know, high school students and their families, having deep and meaningful conversation about the violence in our communities, who are helping to get guns off the streets. I've met some of these folks in the course of this campaign, and they're doing incredible work. This is the kind of work that we should support. It's this relational work, neighbor to neighbor, folks who have the relationships to have these conversations and get guns off the streets. The folks that I know who've been doing this work have recovered over 3,800 guns, just in Germantown and the Northwest. So that's amazing work, and we should support that as well.
All right, you have one minute for a rebuttal? No. Okay. One minute for a rebuttal? All right, next question. What is your definition of affordable housing, and how might low-income families be affected in this district when it comes to creating new developments?
Well, there can be no question that we need more affordable housing, but what I wanted to do is jump right to what the numbers are. Because there's been a lot of speculation or conversation, again, that is incorrect in terms of that we have not been supporting affordable housing throughout the Eighth Council District. And so I just wanted to mention just a couple of things that are online and getting started right now. So we have a number of apartments that are happening, affordable apartments that are coming online. We have about 48 apartments happening in, I won't say where exactly, but in the North Philadelphia part of the district. We have another 41 units happening in, that's the Nice Town area, and another 50 units happening in Nice Town. And then we have another 45 units that are getting ready to come online that are under construction and almost complete in sort of the Nice Town, Tioga area. And so, you know, we've been working closely with our partners, whether it's, you know, PHA, Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation, you know, the Redevelopment Authority. We've been working very closely to bring units online because we know that there is a shortage of affordable housing units. We know that 37,000 people apply for Housing Choice vouchers, and so we've got a lot of work to do to make our way even close to what needs to happen. The way we do affordable housing right now just doesn't work. What we do is we say to a developer, we'll offer them what's essentially a bonus. If you add four units, eight units, 10 units to your project, then you can build more units or you can go up a floor. It doesn't work. We're never going to be able to address the 27 or 37 or 50,000 people, depending on how you count the numbers. We're never going to be able to address the numbers that need quality, affordable housing at that rate. At the end of the day, it's the city of Philadelphia's responsibility to provide affordable housing for its residents, and I believe that we can do it. We have the funds. We've had more than enough funds, in my opinion, over the last decade-plus that I've been in city council, because we've had surpluses every year in the city budget, whether it's 150 million, 300 million, 400 million, 500 million. These are real numbers that have come in year after year after year and could be used by the city of Philadelphia to produce the affordable housing units that we actually need in the city of Philadelphia. And I believe that we can do this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, same question. As a reminder, we're not allowing clapping. Thank you. Same question.
So my question is then, why aren't we?
All right. I just said, no clapping, everyone. We can't do that. We can't do it. All right.
Housing is a human right. The government, housing is a human right. The government has a responsibility to guarantee safe and affordable place to live, okay? We need a comprehensive plan, starting with a district housing analysis. We need to end the 10-year tax abatements immediately and create new incentives to build deeply affordable housing. You know, we can't leave this to catch-as-catch-can, right? We need a plan, and we need to fight for it. So as an organizer, as somebody who brings people together to fight for what we need, I understand that over these last 10 years, that we've, as we've been seeing Germantown gentrify and Nice Town gentrify, it would have been good to have somebody in the position organizing with us to demand deeply affordable housing, right? Because the thing that I understand is that at the end of the day, the people have the power. The people have the power. It's not about the deals that we can cut as elected officials. It's about how we can mobilize as people to demand what we need. And that's the role of a leader. That's the role of a councilperson in this district, in a deeply, rapidly gentrifying district. This is what we need. So I'll say, this will be a major, major priority of my tenure on council. I think it's disconcerting that after three terms, you're raising these numbers. This is disconcerting. And I think, look, we have to mention the fact that, you know, you are funded by developers. You are funded by developers. You've received over $100,000 in developer contributions over the last two years. A super PAC now, a Republican developer-funded super PAC, just bought just $90,000 ad buy for you on cable television. Why would they make that investment to you unless they were getting something in return? That's all I'm going to say.
All right, one minute for a rebuttal.
So Seth says that this is disconcerting. This is not disconcerting. You're uninformed. And so these are not new numbers. These are not numbers that I'm pulling out, out of nowhere. These are numbers that have been here, that have been in existence. And when you look at all of the units that we've put online, because there's more, I could go through a list for you, but my question to you is, have you done the work? Have you done the homework to check and see before you put out there that we haven't done anything on affordable housing? We've done a considerable amount of work on affordable housing, but because you haven't been on the ground, you don't know about it. And the other thing is related to...
Continue, please.
Related to, why haven't we done it? When I spoke about, okay, we've got this money, the money is there, why hasn't it been done? To me, it goes back to a fundamental, basic understanding of how city government works is that the mayor spends the money. City council, we appropriate, we investigate, and we legislate. That is the function of city council. When it comes to those additional dollars, the mayor has the ultimate authority in terms of making those kinds of changes happen.
Okay, thank you so much. One minute for rebuttal.
One of the things that was mentioned in the recent Inquirer article, which... One of the things that was mentioned in the recent Inquirer article, which quoted Mo Rushdie's support for you, was that there are some 1,200 public parcels owned in the city in this district, right? So these are parcels that could be and could have been used to build deeply affordable housing. And so the question is, why aren't they? And, I think the answer to that is also in Mo Rushdie's response and his support for you, because he's looking, and the developers are looking, at this district with those 1,200 parcels, and licking their lips, and figuring, how are they going to get their hands on that money, or on, on, on that land? And I think that that's why, at the end of the day, that they decided that you were a good investment.
All right, thank you so much. We're going to move on to the next question. How many rebuttals did we do? I'm asking. Melika, you were keeping track? Yeah, how many rebuttals did we do?
So, I just want to, I just really feel the need to say something, because as, as I mentioned earlier, you know, I'm someone who was born and raised in North Philadelphia, and I lived in a dollar house without windows. So, so, so don't sit here and tell me that I'm not about affordable housing. I know affordable housing. I know what it's like to not have a secure place to live. I know what it's like to live in a house with a hole in the floor, that you got to step around. So before you judge the end product, you don't know what it took to make this product what it is today. And so you have to be careful about judging and making a judgment about what someone stands for and what they're going to do, and if you're going to make that judgment, you should base, base it on what has been done, and base it on the affordable housing units that I have brought online. How many affordable housing units have you brought online? How many, how much work have you done on affordable housing? Tell, tell us, tell us, how much work have you done on it? Because we'd like to know.
All right, thank you. Your one minute. As a reminder for the folks in the audience, if you're talking when the candidates are finishing answering your questions, everyone who's streaming or watching this later will not be able to hear them, so it's very important that we kind of keep the volume down. Thank you. Go ahead, one minute.
Yeah, I'm not the elected representative. So, I'm an organizer, I'm a union organizer, that's what I've been doing.
Before I was elected to anything, I was working.
This is his time.
Okay, sorry.
We want to talk about what I've done, we can talk about that, but for sure, you know, this is something that, that is deeply meaningful to me as well. I spent a lot of my childhood and youth housing insecure, and moved around a lot, and had to be the new kid in the new school, and all kinds of things. So I appreciate where you're coming from, and this was not meant as a personal criticism of your history, this was meant as a criticism of your policy, a criticism of your practice, what we've seen in the district in terms of a commitment to building deeply affordable housing.
All right, thank you so much. That's the end of that question. We're going to move on to the next one. This is a follow-up to that question, so you will be able to speak more on housing, both of you. So following that question, the city funds demolition of hundreds of old and unsafe buildings annually. These buildings could be repaired in many cases, but someone argued that the city has developed a culture of urban renewal through demolition. What would your office do to combat this issue, and would you redirect funds to repair buildings over demolition or something different?
So there is a considerable amount of work that's being done right now to keep these properties, affordable housing units, online and available, and preserve them in our communities. And so, there's a number of units, whether it's Champ Lost Homes, Emlyn Arms, Morton Homes, all are being renovated and preserved, so that they are permanently affordable housing units, so that we, what we had in University City will not happen here. There is a strong effort afoot that my office is working with different folks, and just because I haven't, you know, like, talked to Seth about it, doesn't mean that things aren't actually happening, okay? So one of the things that we've been doing is working, working with those who can make these things happen, to make sure that there is a balance of development, that there are mixed-income, mixed-units, and also renovation, and also preservation of existing affordable housing units that is going on right now. And the preservation is absolutely essential, because what we saw that happened at the University City Town Homes, we need to make sure it does not happen here. We need to make sure that when a developer or a property owner decides that they're out of the business of providing these units, and they want to get out of the game, and they want to do something else, and take their money, you know, grab this cash and go, that there's an opportunity at that point for the city to step in and to purchase those units. That's what ultimately happened, that's what we were on record saying from the very beginning, that it was the City of Philadelphia's responsibility to step in and purchase those units so that those families would not be displaced, and that's what we're working to do here in the 8th District as well.
All right, you have one minute. Uh, no, you don't, just kidding, I need to redo that question, because it's long. Following up on the previous question about affordable housing, the city funds demolition of hundreds of old and unsafe buildings annually. These buildings could be repaired in many cases, but someone argued that the city has developed a culture of urban renewal through demolition. What would your office do to combat the issue, and would you redirect funds to repair these buildings over demolition or something else?
Yeah, demolition is currently being incentivized, and I, I would, I would support a moratorium on demolition. And I would support making the entire Germantown corridor, you know, giving it an historic designation that makes those kinds of things more, more difficult. You know, I think we need to, you know, revitalize, we need to repair, we need to rebuild, you know, not demolish. So, that's my position on that.
Hey, you have one minute for rebuttal? No rebuttal? All right, next question. How would you revitalize the Germantown Business, Germantown Business Corridor and support small businesses?
Well, the Germantown Business Corridor, we obviously need work. We've been working with the Commerce Department for quite some time now with the current Commerce Director, Anne Nadal, who we brought to this corridor, working with her, we've been working to get grants out to the merchants, facade improvements, things of that nature, and also supporting the businesses directly through our office with support that they may need to navigate the city, whether it's through LNI or the different departments. These are things that are just incredibly important so that folks, as they are working their way through city government, that they have a real, a real hand-holding experience from our office. And so those are the kinds of things that need to happen, that we've been doing, and that we're going to continue to do, to make sure that we have those relationships maintained between the city and the small business community in Germantown.
All right, same question.
Thank you. I mean, again, we've had this situation in Germantown, which has been unfortunate with the Germantown Special Services District. Again, there were small business owners along the commercial corridor who wanted to invest in program and maintain these corridors themselves, and our councilperson stepped in, overrode that, appointed a board, appointed everybody on the board. And then, we know what happened, is that those services weren't actually provided, and there was $125,000 that was embezzled. So, you know, small business owners and taxpayers paid for that, and that's wrong, you know? And our councilperson still hasn't taken any responsibility for her role in that, hasn't acknowledged it, has put it all on the one person, and so what I think we need to do is bring business, small business community together to find out what they want, what they'd like to see, and support them toward that vision. You know, I have a vision of having thriving, you know, thriving business corridors, so that everybody, no matter where you live in the district, is within a 15-minute walk of everything that you need. You know, we have supermarkets, we have hardware stores, we have libraries, we have, you know, food stores, and coffee shops, and bookstores, and all of these things that we need in our communities, you know, we should, we have an opportunity to support this development in our community. So, you know, I think we need to look at other measures that we know support growth of small business districts. Traffic calming measures, we need to look at, we need to make sure that our, our business corridors are well-lit, that people are safe, you know, after dark, that, that they're thriving, that there are outdoor places for people to meet and be and congregate and do, and do things. And so this is the vision that we have, and I'm excited to work with small business owners to create this, you know, all throughout the district, because I think this is something that, that, that we deserve and that people would like to have. You know, you don't want to have to leave, you don't want to have to drive 30 minutes, you know, from where you live to go to a market, or get a nice meal, or, you know, go to a, you know, go to a hardware store. So, you know, we need to prioritize creating thriving business districts that are the backbones of our communities.
One minute for rebuttal.
So just a couple of things. So, you know, I, I do want to point out, one of the things that we were able to, to have accomplished, which I'm very proud of, is the complete renovation of Maplewood Mall, in which we renovated, got the City of Philadelphia to renovate and bring new resources directly to Maplewood Mall. But I also wanted to talk just very briefly about the Germantown Special Services District, even though we've covered this, you know, extensively. But, so, just so you know, there are three special services districts in the City of Philadelphia. Two are what are called BIDS, Business Improvement Districts, one in Chestnut Hill, one in Mounterre, and then we have the Germantown Special Services District. The two in Mounterre are strictly, are strictly operated and have voting capacity by property owner, owners only. And so there's no opportunity for anyone who's a business owner, if you're not a property owner, to have any significant say in terms of what happens along the commercial corridor. Germantown has had the opportunity to have people, residents from the community actively engaged and involved in what's happening on that corridor, and that's what the Germantown Special...
One minute for rebuttal over here.
And I'll come back on the next rebuttal.
Thank you. The other thing that I would say that's, that's an important piece of this, is that what supports a thriving business corridor is people who have money to spend. So, you know, again, you know, fighting for workers' rights to organize unions, right? Because when workers organize unions, we put money in people's pockets that gives them money to spend in their local business corridor. So, again, these are all connected, right? Having, having an economic driver, like greening our economy, that can lead to good union jobs in our communities, puts dollars in pockets, which that can then get used and spent to support local business. So all of these things go together hand in hand, that's it.
All right, we're going to move on to the next question. What can the 8th District Councilmember do to expand housing for low-income older adults in the district, and what resources and strategies, strategies could you employ to overcome any potential barriers?
Well, what you have to do is be willing to work with those who provide affordable housing units, and also with, with those who are funding affordable housing units. You have to be able to work with, for example, those in Harrisburg who are providing RCAP funding, to make sure that these projects happen, as well as work with private developers and also entities like PHA. PHA is the largest entity that provides affordable housing here in the City of Philadelphia. We have an excellent working relationship, and we've been online with them quite a bit throughout the pandemic, to make sure people are housed, to make sure that new units are coming online. And as I mentioned before, there were several units that were coming online throughout different parts of the district, but beyond that, we actually had some new units that I'm proud to say we cut the ribbon on during my tenure, such as the New Cortland property at 19th and Allegheny, you know, 50 to, I would say somewhere between 50 and 60 units there. There are other units that provided affordable housing by the Nice Town CDC. If you come up Germantown Avenue, along that corridor, there are probably a few hundred affordable housing units that we had the honor and privilege of working with Nice Town CDC to make sure that those units happened and to cut the ribbon on. And so there's going to be a considerable amount more, as, besides the ones that I mentioned here. There are quite a few units that are coming online that are working, we're working to make it happen, and it's happening. And so we're very excited about that, because we are providing affordable housing, not at the rate that we need to. As I mentioned, the City of Philadelphia ultimately has that responsibility and can do it, and we're working on that. Thank you.
All right, same question.
Excuse me. This is an issue that is near and dear to my heart. My, my grandmother worked for 30 years to bring low-income senior housing into existence throughout Philadelphia, Germantown, North Philadelphia. And I grew up, you know, in those places, in those community rooms, and listening to those seniors, and learning the history of Philadelphia from their perspective. I learned about the Great Migration, you know, from talking to those seniors. I learned about their histories as window washers and seamstresses, and, you know, all throughout Philadelphia. And it was a great learning experience for me. You know, and, and, you know, these are the folks who've built our city, these are the people who have done the work, you know, on whose shoulders we stand, and they need to be able to live dignified lives with, with quality, deeply affordable housing. And, you know, I, I, again, I would say we've got 1,200 of these parcels in this district that we could use to develop, you know, deeply affordable housing for seniors. And I'll just mention, because I, I have to, that there was a proposal for the Y in the shadow, we are in the shadow of the Y, right here, for, for affordable senior housing, low-income senior housing, that was scuttled, that was not even considered, and the Y still sits here vacant, just like Germantown High School and Town Hall. So, you know, when we had opportunities to build low-income senior housing, we chose not to, and we insisted on market-rate housing. And so I think that history speaks for itself, and, you know, we would use some of those 1,200 parcels to build deeply affordable, low-income housing for seniors, and that I guarantee you.
One minute for rebuttal.
So, so much, in so much of Philadelphia, it feels like the fix is in. And it feels that, it feels like this project that Seth is referencing, the fix was in. Mm-hmm. And so, when we asked the Redevelopment Authority, and this is documented, so you don't have to take my word, anybody who wants to do five minutes worth of research, this is documented. The Redevelopment Authority told one developer, you're rated as a minority, so you get a higher score. They were not a minority. They told the other developer, you're not rated as a minority. They were a minority. When we questioned to see the entire scoring sheet for the Germantown Town, for the Germantown Y project, the entire scoring sheet changed. It went from one developer to another.
All right, thank you so much.
And we still don't have all of the answers as to why that happened.
I have to cut you off, thank you. One minute for you.
The council member's talking about the developer, the council member isn't talking about the project. So the project, could you not have found a developer who would build low-income senior housing? We're talking about the project, the proposal was for low-income senior housing. I, I agree that we should have, you know, local, especially, especially local, black developers, we should support local black developers. This developer is based in Ohio. I, I, I don't even understand the connection here.
Let me help you understand.
We can't, we can't go back and forth, sorry, this is his turn. You have 30 seconds.
Is it my, who's time?
It's still, it's still his time, he's got 30 seconds.
Oh, I'm done.
All right, thank you. All right, so, I'm going to move on.
I really have to.
I'm sorry, this is how the format is, I didn't choose the format. All right, what time, is it, Melika?
1:00.
What? Okay. All right, next question, and we'll have, you know, more time to go into further answers. What is your vision for the 8th, 8th District for the next four years?
So I want to go, you know, I, thank you for your question, it's very important, but I do want to, I have to address this, because it's very important. You talk about, you know, Black Lives Matter, Black Development Matters, but we'll get to it later. to it later. If Black Development Matters, and it matters right here, right now, you talk about economic empowerment and the importance of lifting people out of poverty, well, putting a black developer on this site would make a difference to the African-American community because they would hire locally. They would hire from the neighborhood. They would hire from the neighborhood. They would hire locally.
So as, as a reminder, the question was, what is your vision for the next eight years? What is your, what is your district for the, what is your vision for the Eighth District for the next four years? That's my question. And as a reminder, we had said that there were no sounds, signs allowed either. Thank you.
And so, and so when we talk about the development of the Y and how important it is to get this project developed, there's nobody who wants this property developed more than I do, but I also know I have to take a stand. And you're trying to elect someone, if you support Seth, who is not willing to take a stand for Black and Brown developers and development projects in the city of Philadelphia. And you may not, you may not, you may disagree on that, but it's important. If you're talking about making sure that there is an opportunity to increase wealth, increase incomes, to be able to support families, to be able to do the things that are absolutely necessary to lift people out of poverty, that project is one of them. And it's not going to happen if we don't make sure that we include Black and Brown developers in Philadelphia, that we include them in what's happening. One of the things that Seth said is he didn't understand why I was supporting an African-American developer who was from Ohio. Do you know why? Because the city of Philadelphia does not have a bench of, of, of large African-American developers to do projects. We have two, three outfits maybe that are able to do these projects.
So again, the question was, what's your vision for the Eighth District in the next four years? How much time do we have left? Okay. A reminder again, the question was, what is your vision for the Eighth District for the next four years?
My district for the Eighth District includes African-Americans being able to develop in the city, which has been thwarted by the redevelopment authority, in my opinion. And I'm taking a stand on that to make sure that we have Black and Brown folks at the table, making sure that as the city grows, as it's being built, as things are happening, and they are happening, but right now they're happening without us. We are economic bystanders in what's happening in our own community. And until we get that right, the city is not going to be full, fully equitable as we all say that we want it to be. This is something that has to happen. It's not a question of should it happen? It's not a question of maybe it could happen? This is a question not of can it happen? It's a question of wills. Like, does the administration, does the next mayoral administration?
As a reminder to the audience, when you talk over the candidates, everyone who is streaming this can't hear. Thank you.
Does the administration and the incoming administration, will they support ensuring African-American and Latino participation in development projects? Because the reason, one of the reasons that we have to go and look for folks outside the city is because it's not happening here now.
Okay, thank you so much. We're going to move over to the same question with, we're going to move over to the same question. So as a reminder, the question was, what is your vision for the Eighth District for the next four years? And we're going to stay on topic the next time we ask questions.
Thank you. Let me just quickly say also that I support, supporting black developers. Can we find black developers who live in Philadelphia? Why did we have to go with a developer who lived in Ohio?
So why didn't anybody apply?
That's one question. And then the other thing is, I also support black, low-income seniors having a place to live. So it doesn't seem like these two things need to be incompatible or in contradiction. So let's work to do that, okay? My vision for this district is that we work together, that we build across this district from Chestnut Hill to Tioga to Logan to Germantown to Nice Town to, I realize I'm not doing it in the same order, but you get what I'm saying, that we organize together to fight for the things that we need, right? And I believe that we need to also build in some co-governance structures. I believe that, you know, we have a system that encourages kind of patronage and, and, and pay-to-play, and we need to get some broader voices into this discussion. So I like the idea of having something along the lines of a community advisory council with representatives from every part of the district, every neighborhood, that sit together, that do an analysis of what we need as a district, look at the resources that we have and how we're going to use those resources. And we do that together. And I can, you know, I'm a part of that process as a council person, but I'm carrying out the vision of the community. That's the vision that I have for this district. And I know from talking to people all across the district that the things that folks in this district prioritize and feel really strongly about is we need deeply affordable housing. We need fully funded schools, parks, and rec centers, and meaningful things for our young people to do so that they know that they are supported. We need to get Philadelphia off of fossil fuels and a pipeline into those green jobs. And lastly, we need a public health approach to the crisis of violence that we are facing. We need to expand our mental health infrastructure in this district and across the city. Thank you.
All right, you have one minute for rebuttal.
So, so let me, so let me just give Seth some information. As you talked about some of the things, some of the needs, again, I want to take you through a, a, a virtual journey through the Eighth District and see the new units that we built at 19th and Allegheny for seniors. And then, again, over to Nice Town, so you can see the units that were built there for low-income families. And then if we come over to Queen Lane and see the affordable units that PHA built at Queen Lane. And then let's look over on the other side of Germantown, on the east side, and let's look at the affordable units that are going to be renovated over at, well, I can't think of the name of it right now, over off of Haynes Street. Let's look at those units that are going to be renovated and preserved permanently as affordable housing units, so that no matter who the owner of the property is, that those are going to be affordable housing units. So let's look at all of the, some total of all of the units, including Champlos Homes, which is also being renovated.
All right, that's one, thank you, Councilwoman Bass. That's one minute for you. Thank you, Councilwoman Bass. That's one minute for you for rebuttal.
I shared my vision. I don't have anything else to say.
All right, we're moving on to the next question. The Eighth District is home to many nonprofits doing strong work that greatly benefits the constituents in the community. How could your administration better support them in the coming years?
Oh, well, there's a number of nonprofits that we do very close work with. I'm proud to say we have great working relationships with the Allegheny West Foundation, with Nice Town CDC, with some of our, our small nonprofits, whether it's community associations, civic associations. We work very hard to make sure that we have and maintain a very close working relationship with them. We've provided supports to help them grow their organizations and funding through the Philadelphia Activities Fund to make sure that we support all of the activities that they're able to have. When you see, let's say, summer events or programs, often these programs are supported through our office with resources from the Philadelphia Activities Fund. These are things that we've been doing for the last 10-plus years and intend to very much continue. And one of the things about the Activities Fund is that we've actually grown the pot. So I would say the, the number of applicants, because a lot of people may not have known, when we came into office, we advertised, we make sure we got the word out, any nonprofit institution that we talk to, we encourage them to apply. And so we've actually grown that fund so that we've been able to get additional dollars into the neighborhoods, and we're very, very proud of that.
Okay, same question. I can read it again, this one's kind of a long one. I want to read it again. The Eighth District is home to many nonprofits doing strong work that greatly benefits the constituents in the community. How can your administration better support them in the coming years?
Thank you. I think that's a very broad question because there are many different nonprofits doing different kinds of work. And so I think, you know, when I think about the answers to this question, I think about it, you know, in relation to this model of co-governance that we're talking about. So, again, having representation from every neighborhood, every, across the district, that can look at the needs holistically of the entire district. And having, you know, nonprofits represented, you know, on that advisory council and, and deciding together collectively, right? This isn't just, you know, me behind closed doors deciding how I want to spend an Activities Fund, but these are resources that we have that, you know, for the district, right? So let's bring folks across the district, including nonprofits, you know, to be part of this discussion, to be at the table. You know, and then beyond that, I think, you know, meeting with nonprofits, setting up regular meetings and a structure, you know, to talk with them so, you know, we're able to find out what they need, you know, how we can help provide access to those resources and, you know, people across the city and different agencies who can help them. You know, just being a resource to those nonprofits to help connect them with, 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 with what they need in the city. And, you know, I, I would expand that as well to the, you know, to the state, because we have to be working with our allies and our elected leaders across the state as well to bring those resources into Philadelphia. Because there's lots of stuff that folks don't know about, don't even know it exists. And so it's, it's, it's really a matter of connecting, you know, people with those resources. Thank you.
All right, you have one minute for rebuttal. All right. How are we doing on time, Melika?
We're at ease.
Okay. All right. A couple more questions here, and then we're going to switch formats a little bit. What is your stance on rent control?
As the daughter of, as I said, a single mother who relied on two properties that she was able to acquire and rent, fix those properties up, rent those properties out, our entire income was $600 per month. It was $300 per unit. And if something broke in one of the units, if some, someone moved, if somebody lost their job, or if somebody just didn't pay, it was a disaster in our house because we couldn't pay. And I know that there are, a majority of our landlords are not big, wealthy, huge apartment building owners. They're small mom and pops. They're small mom and pop landlords who own just a few properties. And because of this, I really just can't support rent control. I think that, you know, finding ways to address rent through what's happening with the economy, you know, whatever we can look at, but I don't think that rent control is the answer. And that's something, again, based on lived experience. This isn't theory, you know, this isn't, you know, well, it, it sounds like a good idea. This is the actuality of someone who was in that situation. And again, when someone couldn't pay, we couldn't pay. You know, if someone couldn't pay their rent or that, you know, that $300, then that was half of our income, gone for the entire month. And heaven forbid, if somebody moved out, then we had to go into the unit, renovate it, fix it up, and then wait till we found another tenant. Again, it was a disaster. And so I know firsthand that these small landlords are just, it's, it's a burden that they are unable to carry. And so rent control is just, unfortunately, it's something that I just cannot see supporting.
All right, same question. What is your stance on rent control?
I mean, I think we have a problem, right? The cost of housing is out of control. The cost of housing is skyrocketing beyond what people can afford, beyond what people can pay. And there are predatory landlords who are taking advantage of the fact that our neighborhoods are gentrifying and they're raising their rents because they know that the folks coming in can afford to pay. And that's making, and that's forcing people out, okay? And so there's a problem. And I do support rent control, and I support it with a scalpel, not a machete. I support it with a scalpel because I think that we should target first corporate landlords, right? And I think, you know, and, and tying, you know, there's also misconceptions about rent control. Rent control doesn't mean that you never raise rent. Rent control means that you, you know, and there's different ways to approach it. Maybe you cap it at the rate of inflation, you know? So we have to protect renters as well. And Philadelphia is becoming largely, it's becoming, it's been a homeowner city, but it's becoming a renter city. And when renters are seeing their rents go up 20, 30, 40% in two years, that's a problem. We can't, I mean, we've got to address that. And, you know, I also think, I hear the thing about the small mom and pop landlords. I do, and I appreciate that. And I know that there are small mom and pop landlords who are rooted in our communities and who want to offer below-market-rate affordable housing for their tenants. And I think that we should look also to help subsidize small mom and pop landlords so that they can continue to offer rent below market rate. But I think, you know, we can't just put our head in the sand and think like, you know, we've got to come up with solutions to help people stay in their houses.
One minute for rebuttal.
Well, the, the solution, the, the solution is making sure that we have good-paying jobs. And I think, Seth, that that's something that you, you've touted. I agree with, making sure through our jobs program at the, at the Nice Town Tioga Library, you know, we've slotted people into good-paying jobs so that they're able to afford rent. No, it shouldn't be skyrocketing at the rate that it is. But I do really want to point out that the majority of landlords in the city of Philadelphia are small mom and pop landlords. It's not these big corporate interests and corporate owners. It's mostly small landlords, people who own one or two or three units and, and who are really using that to supplement their income. We had, you know, an, an older senior that we were working with recently who relied on her rental income to be able to afford the apartment unit where she was very well taken care of, but she relied on that rental income to be able to stay where she was and to continue to age in place, in a place where she felt comfortable. So she certainly wasn't someone who could afford to take a, take a, a, less on her rent.
All right, thank you so much. That's that time there. We're going to take a quick pause, and we're going to switch to a, nope, just kidding. You have one minute for your rebuttal. This is what I get for not looking at my notes. There you go.
Yeah, I, I yield my time. I, I, I don't have anything to add. I mean, you know, we need to fight for, you know, a targeted rent control that makes sense, that understands the realities of small landlords and doesn't punish them, but also, you know, tries to incentivize and support them to offer rent at below-market rates so that people have reasonable, affordable places to live.
Okay, so now we are switching into candidate-specific questions. These are short questions. The candidates have questions that are directed towards them individually. They get two minutes to answer each question. There's no rebuttal time, so I'm going to repeat that. So you get two minutes to answer each of the shorter questions that are aimed directly at you, and there's no rebuttal time.
Are we almost done?
That's a, I, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
All right, we'll take it. All right, so.
Can we have a time, timeout for one, one second? Because I do want to address something on Patreon.
We've got to move along. Maybe when Patreon comes back up. All right, so we're going to move along, so two minutes, no rebuttals here. All right. First question is for Seth. How do you plan to involve residents in decision-making on matters that affect constituents the most?
I've mentioned it a little bit. I mean, we're, you know, I think it's important to figure out some co-governance structures. You know, I think it's important, whether they're issue-based or regional-based, right? I think, you know, what we have is a system where people, by and large, are not engaged in the political process, are not engaged in many of the decisions that affect their lives in very deep and meaningful ways. And I think that that's a problem on a lot of levels, but one of the reasons that's a problem is because we're seeing voter turnout plummet in the city of Philadelphia. So, you know, voter turnout has declined in Philadelphia over the past three cycles so that this past November, Pittsburgh had more votes, had more, had more people turn out on Election Day than Philadelphia. And this is because people feel, you know, you know, disconnected from our political process and feel left behind and feel like it doesn't matter, their voices aren't heard. And so I think figuring out how to build these co-governance structures that are community-based, where everybody is in, you know, every, every neighborhood has representation, we have issue-based representation, and the decisions that we make together as a whole collectively is very important. I also think that's important because, you know, I grew up in Germantown, and I remember feeling like a little bit of a chip on my shoulder, right? That like, oh, well, the, the folks in Mount Airy had it better, and then the folks in Chestnut Hill had it better. Chestnut Hill had it better. And, you know, and then later I learned that the folks in Nice Town thought the same way about Germantown and the folks, right? So, so all along the way, there's this kind of culture of division, and I think we need to build politics that counteracts that. We need to build politics that brings us together and helps us and, and puts us in a place to figure out how to solve our problems together. So that's what I would like to work on.
Thank you so much. This question is for you. If given the opportunity, are there any projects that you'd like to readdress if elected for another term? Or are there any stances you'd like to revisit?
Well, absolutely. I think the projects that, that I would like to continue to address are some of the development projects that have, you know, we've been working on for quite some time, whether they are the, you know, the Nice Town, or excuse me, the Logan Triangle, which we've been working on for quite some time. And then there's also the Germantown Y. But overall, you know, we've been able to address a lot of the things that need to be happening throughout our community. Government is slow, things take time, but we are on the right track, and I am not going to leave these projects unfinished. In my next term, we will be working to make sure that they are finished in that next term.
All right, thank you. Next question's for you, Seth. What would be your top three issues or priorities within your first year if elected?
Passing the deeply affordable housing zoning overlay, number one. You know, fighting for full funding to remediate the lead mold and asbestos in our schools and bringing parents together to fight for that, right? Some of the things we can do to bring more resources into our school district to address some of these issues is we can end the 10-year tax abatement immediately, which has been robbing our schools of the resources they need. We can also go to Harrisburg and organize busloads of people from our community to go to Harrisburg and stand with our elected representatives in Harrisburg to demand that Harrisburg fund our, our school district in Philadelphia and fund our schools. So, you know, this is where the organizing part of it comes in. It's not just us, it's, it's not just me as a person, right? It's not just me as an elected official. It's all of us taking action together to fight together for what we need. So schools, housing, you know, and then the third one, that's a good question. I would love to see us, you know, really work to improve our business corridors and support small business all throughout the district, you know, 22nd Street, Germantown Avenue, Broad Street. And I think I would convene a series of meetings across the district to meet with small businesses, you know, to think about how we can envision a future where we're creating these walkable neighborhoods, where everybody has access to things within 10 to 15 minutes away by foot. And, you know, because that's going to be the backbone and the heart of, 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 of our communities. So that, that's where I would start. Thank you.
Melika, can I get a time check, please?
Pedro.
Thank you so much. All right, I am going to hand it to Pedro for a moment. We're going to get to know the candidates a little bit more with some neighborhood specific questions. This is super quick, and each candidate will get one minute to answer.
Thank you, everyone. How's it going? All right, all right. First of all, I'd like to really thank the candidates for their participation in informing the voters of the eighth district about the vital issues for our community. I also like to thank the organizers who have been, the team that put this together, Germantown Info House. I'd like to thank Center in the Park for hosting us here. And I'd like to thank our supporters, especially the small businesses that make contribution to make this happen, and the volunteers who are here. So I'd like to talk, just a quick moment to talk about G-Town Radio. We hosted this debate to provide a solid civic dialogue about the presentations in our neighborhood. Our shows, those of you who listen, if you haven't tuned in yet, I invite you to do so. Our shows are hosted by neighbors, providing information, community news, independent music, and more. So really great talk shows that happen at G-Town Radio. And you know what's next. Please support us today. It takes money to do what we do. We're a small nonprofit, so I invite you to go to our website, just Google Germantown Radio, and then click the button to donate, make a contribution, so we can continue to provide this type of programming to the residents of Northwest Philadelphia. So are you going to give?
Yes!
That's right. And those of you who are watching at home, we have, I understand, hundreds of viewers so far, please also go to Germantown Radio, if you're watching through Germantown Radio, go to the link that says donate. In addition to financial support, we also encourage volunteers to help with the many activities we do throughout the neighborhood, and also looking for members of the board. So thank you and have a fantastic night. I also like to thank our moderator, Sam Cerros, for an amazing job that she had displayed today. Thank you. So, back to you, Sam.
Thank you. Before we go into closing arguments, we're just going to do two quick get to know you questions. These are fun and super easy, I promise. No pressure. Everyone take a deep breath. All right. First question, we'll start with you, Councilman Bass. If you were going to get takeout or eat somewhere in the neighborhood after this, where would it be and what would you get?
Oh, I would go to Jacobs, and they have, in my opinion, the best brisket in the city of Philadelphia, actually on the planet. It's, it's amazing.
And same question.
7165 Germantown Avenue. I'm familiar.
Are we looking for a Germantown face? Either or, just any.
It says somewhere in the neighborhood.
Just somewhere in the neighborhood.
You want me to redo my answer? I have another one, too.
Well, you.
Cluckin' Gills, that's really good, too. Inverly Cluckin' Gills. Oh, I love it. Right across the street, mm. Bitch.
This is a tough one. I, you know, this is harder than the housing questions. You know, I, I mean, the thing that I find myself craving probably more than anything recently anyway, is Chinese food. And I love Far East over on West Hickin Ave. I think they make really good food. And, you know, I would love some shrimp and black bean sauce right about now.
Oh, that's helpful. I live in Roxborough, so I'm going to figure out how to get to both of them. Maybe by the weekend, I'll figure it out. Another get to know you question, we'll start over here this time. What is your favorite site, monument, or museum in Germantown and why?
Favorite site, monument, or museum? I don't know. Favorite site, monument, or museum? Dang it, I feel like I'm on Jeopardy. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm using more than my allotted time on this.
I have a minute.
Okay, I've got a minute. I mean, Market Square is, is, you know, the farmer's market there. It's a, it's a nice place to gather, a nice place to meet, meet somebody, have a cup of coffee. There's a lot of historical buildings right within, you know, eyesight of that, you know, that history. I, I could go with Market Square.
Same question.
So a couple of sites that I really like are, well, there's the Black Writers Museum, which is right here in Vernon Park in Worcester House, if anybody's ever been over there. They have an incredible exhibit of written works from African American authors, and it's phenomenal. Like, if you've never been over for a tour, you really have to check it out. But besides that, I also really love Johnson House and have been a huge supporter of Johnson House for many years because it was a stop on the Underground Railroad. And so as we think about, you know, as I think about history as lineage and, and family, the Johnson House really stands out as a place that I imagine myself that if I needed sanctuary, you know, if I was, you know, on the run, if I was trying to escape a slave master. Every time I walk in, you know, I feel a chill, I feel a goose bump, I feel, you know, something very deep and very spiritual because of what has happened at that, at that place for, you know, many, many years now, actually for, since the early 1800s, so. Johnson House, I would say, also.
All right. Thank you both. We're now going to move on to closing statements. Each candidate will have four minutes for their closing statement. We'll start with Councilman Bass.
So, well, number one, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. It's been, it's been lively, and, you know, that's always, you know, very interesting, it makes a debate very interesting. But it's just a couple of things I want to say about some of the things that have been said tonight. And the first thing I want to say is that I want to let you know that I'm somebody who shows up. I show up. I show up in rooms where I'm wanted, and I show up in rooms where I'm not necessarily wanted. I show up. I show up because I know that it's important for you to hear what needs to be said. If there's information that I have that can be helpful, that can make a difference, that can change perspectives, I show up. My, my opponent has not shown up. When we were working to keep Germantown High School open, I can tell you who was across the street marching, protesting, and who wasn't. I can tell you who was down at the SRC meeting, asking, practically begging to keep Germantown High School open, who wrote letters, and I can tell you who wasn't. I can tell you who, when we were trying to close this, for those of you who might know, and, you know, I see somebody here who wanted to buy the building and, and once it was closed, because, you know, they had their own personal interest in it. But when we were trying to work to close the, the Stop and Go, which was causing a huge problem over here at Vernon Park, I can tell you who showed up at the liquor control hearing and who was missing in action. Everybody who wants to represent you should have some level of respect for you that they show up. That's what this gig calls for. It calls for you to show up, whether you're walking into a room where everybody loves you, or you're walking into a room where they don't. Your job is to show up and to be available at all times. We make ourselves available. We do coffee with the councilwoman every other week. We do chat and chew every other week. Folks can sit down directly with me, tell me what you're thinking, tell me what you're feeling. You don't have to be a, you know, on, on social media and, you know, saying whatever it is that you want to say. You can come and meet with me. And as a matter of fact, we'll be meeting this Monday here, this Monday coming up, for anybody who wants to come, feel free to just, you know, just call the office, sign up. We'll take anybody for any reason, for any issue, but we are here, we are accessible, and that is what we have been for the time, for the duration that I've been in council. But again, I say to my opponent, where have you been? Because I'm telling you, I've been out here fighting for this community. And this is not an easy job. This is a job that requires you to go against the grain if you're really going to make a change. And that's what I've done. And if I hadn't gone against the grain, then I would have a whole lot more friends, I would have a whole lot more nice articles written about me. But the job is to make sure that we represent and we represent fairly. And I'm going to tell you that the work that we do is about the future. It's about the future of Philadelphia, it's about the future of the Eighth Council District, and we're going to continue to do that work. And the last thing I just want to say is that earlier in the debate, my opponent made a reference to me accepting responsibility for something that someone else does. And I want to ask him if he really wants to take that stance after yesterday and what happened. Do you want to take the responsibility for something that someone else did that you weren't there, that you weren't a part of, as someone was handing out your literature yesterday? Do you really want to take that stance about responsibility for other people's actions? Because if that is so.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilwoman.
Then that is something that you need to address.
Thank you. All right. You have four minutes. If you talk over. Hey, everybody, thank you so much. We can't have people yelling back and forth, that doesn't help anybody. There's people online who are trying to view this who then can't hear, and yelling doesn't help anything. Thank you, Rashid, thank you. All right, four minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Integrity matters. Accountability matters. Leadership matters. Decisions get made every day that have enormous consequences for our neighborhoods, and far too often, we've not been included in those decisions. After thousands of conversations over the course of this campaign, we've heard over and over the same issues. Development is out of control, the cost to live here is pushing us out, our schools are unsafe and underfunded, along with our libraries and rec centers. Trash is piling up, and gun violence has robbed so many families of the right to see their children live full lives. You say you have experience. You've touted yourself as the candidate who can get things done. Yet we gather tonight in the shadow of Germantown High School, the YWCA, and Town Hall, neighborhood gems all, still sitting vacant on a major commercial corridor. You're the chair of Parks and Rec on City Council, yet Barrett, Barrett Playground remains shuttered. Happy Hollow, the country's first rec center, sits with no swings, leaky ceilings, peeling paint everywhere you look. Where's the rebuild money? Germantown Special Services District, with a board appointed solely by you, embezzled money from small business owners and taxpayers, and you've refused to take any responsibility for that.
Are you responsible for what happened? We can't have a rebuttal to closing statements, it's a closing statement, go ahead.
We elected you to look out for us. We didn't expect you to solve everything, but we also didn't expect you to curry favor with developers at the expense of our communities. We didn't expect you to side with SEPTA and the fossil fuel industry against the health of our neighbors.
He didn't speak during your time.
If you want to know what this race is about, what it's really about, follow the money. Why has your campaign accepted hundreds of thousands of contributions from developers and corporate PACs over the, over the past years? Why has Philly for Growth, a developer funded Republican super PAC with ties to a mainline billionaire who funded the effort to overturn Roe v. Wade, put out a TV ad for you? Could it be because we have flat out refused developer money and they're scared of the movement that we're building to put working class people and affordable housing first? Could it be because there's 1,200 public parcels they're dying to get their hands on? Could it be because they know you're open for business and we're not for sale? That's exactly why they did it. We have a choice to make next Tuesday. For the first time in this district in more than a decade, voters have a choice in who their city council member will be. And the lines couldn't be clearer, and the stakes couldn't be higher. This election is about whether we come together to build a future for our children that includes all of us, or whether working class, black and brown people get written out of that future by those who are seeking to profit from the sale of our communities. Tonight and every night, we will stand on the side of the people and speak truth to power. I'm here to voice the shared vision of our community's future. Fully funded schools, parks and community centers, clean water and air, safe, well-lit streets, affordable transit, and accessible housing. It's a future that's been denied to us, but it's never been out of reach. With the right leadership, we can rebuild our city and craft a future of opportunity and justice for generations to come.
All right, thank you so much to both of you. All right, good job. All right, so I want to say thank you to both candidates. I want to say thank you to both of the candidates, that's Seth Anderson Oberman and Councilperson Cindy Bass. If y'all talk over me, you won't be able to hear the voting information, so that's kind of important. All right, let's get into it. All right, so again, I'm going to thank Seth Anderson Oberman. Ma'am, can I please get the voting information? Because if y'all don't vote, what's the point of all of this? Thank you. All right, so Seth Anderson Oberman and Councilperson Cindy Bass, thank you so much for participating in this Eighth District City Council debate. Please remember to vote on Tuesday, May 16th, 2023. You can vote by mail if you haven't done that already. There will be a rebroadcast and an archive of this debate on G-Town Radio and the Philly Cam websites. Thank you so much to the Eighth District constituents that came out today. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
This debate will be a discussion. This debate will be additional broadcast on our sister radio station, the RGU and the RLG, 92.9 FM. Tune into 92.9 FM to read, to hear the rebroadcast of this event in the next few days. Thank you so much.